Good evening. Thank you for joining us for our regularly scheduled council meeting on Tuesday, June 27th. It's shortly after 7:00 PM. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Charlie Davidson. George Glover.
Here.
Ben Salsada.
Here.
Charles Schwenke. Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum, sir.
Thank you very much. Pastor Whitmore will start us off with our invocation, and I will lead our pledge. You will please stand.
Thank you. Y'all pray with me, please. Our great heavenly Father, I just thank you for your grace and in blessing us with a great day today. And Lord, I just ask your blessing over our country and Lord over Park City. And Lord, again, tonight as the council here, we just thank you for them. And Lord, I pray that you help them to make wise decisions and just help them with their decisions that they make tonight. And Lord, we just thank you for who you are and just being the blessings that you are. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Okay, we'll start out with approval of the agenda. I believe there's an item 17 on every council's desk we need to add. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented with that item added. Jim?
I would move to approve the agenda with item 17 added.
Brandy?
I second that.
See no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Awards and presentations. Don't believe we have any tonight. Public forum. Nobody has signed up for public forum tonight. Sean, do you have a city administrative report, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Council may remember last month, Public Works advertised an RFP for a water meter replacement throughout the entire city. This past week, they received a total of three submissions. And yesterday, the selection committee, which includes Councilmember Jones, met and ranked each of them accordingly. All three were very competitive, and those results will be presented to council at the next meeting on July 11th. Another study going on is the Parks Master Plan, following the public meeting that was held in early May. The survey questions were converted into an online format, and they had been posted over the last 30 days to both the city's website as well as our Facebook pages. We've received a total of nearly 300 submissions from Park City residents, and now they are putting the final reports on the report or touches on the report. Their intentions are to share that report with the steering committee, which is primarily made up by the Parks and Tree Board the week of July 17th, and then again, council during the August 8th meeting. And finally, the last study we still have going on is the stormwater fees, the one that Wilson and Company, where they were working on developing and calculating an ERU, which stands for the Equivalent Residential Unit, and is typically the average square footage of impervious surface of a single-family residential lot. The ERU calculation, combined with several stormwater CIP projects they've identified, will again be presented to council with options and recommendations for implementation, and that too should also occur the first week in August. An update on various projects around the community. For it just being one week in, it has been very good progress on is being made on Air Cap Drive Extension in between 53rd Street and 61st Street. Across the street, they're clearing the site from us for the new O'Reillys. The traffic light at 53rd and Air Cap, as well as the highway on and off ramps, had some technical issues earlier in the week or last week, but those are up and running. And then finally, some of you may have noticed, but after several comments and concerns, the left turn lane for eastbound to northbound to get on the highway off 61st Street at 135 has been converted into a left turn on green arrow only, which should help with the visibility at that intersection. And then finally, we received the final version of the informational video for the sales tax referendum.
Park City is an innovative community with a small-town feel.
Park City has a relatively short but rich history. Beginning as the Park City Improvement District in 1953, it was born from a quarter section of farmland purchased by developers into a 3,300-acre community.
In the next quarter century, it grew in both size and population. In 1980, it became a city of the third class.
Since then, the city has continued to expand, mature, and use innovative ideas to distinguish itself from surrounding communities.
Today, Park City is a special place of about 8,500 active citizens. They're growing their businesses, they're raising their children, and they're enjoying their retirement.
For the past 40-plus years, leaders of Park City have focused on smart programs and policies that make Park City the best place to call home.
We want to make sure our families are safe and our businesses flourish.
We are proud of our policies and programs that protect taxpayers and the open transparency you've become accustomed to.
And we've accomplished this by ensuring that every important decision made in our short history has been done so with the input of citizens across our community.
So that we remain one of the best communities in Kansas to live, work, and raise a family.
After much research and community input, our city council voted unanimously on May 9th to place a sales tax referendum on the August 1st ballot. If approved by the voters, the sales tax referendum would implement a 1% sales tax that would bring us in line with most other communities in Sedgwick County. Based on your input, this funding could be used for community-driven, local enhancements, and projects that benefit Park City residents. These could include improving our parks, building a community swimming pool or splash pad, connecting neighborhoods with sidewalks and hiking bike trails, as well as much-needed road and infrastructure improvements. A new senior center is another option, a place that could be used for gathering with friends, fellowship, or family reunions. The estimated impact on the average resident is around $2.47 a month. It is important to note that most of the sales tax paid in Park City is paid for by visitors passing through our city every day. They stop here to either shop or dine before heading on their way. However, they use our streets, our infrastructure, and our police services. So 88% of this sales tax revenue will come from out-of-town visitors from surrounding communities and distant places. Only 12% will come from residents from Park City and the surrounding area. So how will the new sales tax revenue be used? As I mentioned previously in this video, that decision will be based on input from our residents. You will help us decide on the most responsible use of these additional funds, whether it's used for improving existing infrastructure, increasing city services and amenities, offering incentives to new businesses that are willing to relocate to Park City, or give our elected officials the option to reduce our property tax rate. The additional revenue could provide relief for homeowners and businesses experiencing a jump in their appraised property values. We've heard from you that you want new shopping, dining, and family entertainment options, that you prefer to keep your spending at home instead of going to Wichita to spend your money. We've heard from you that you want to improve the basic city services such as police, cleaner parks, better roads, and other much-needed infrastructure improvements. It is important to note that there will be no increase in the property tax rate as a result of the referendum passing. Again, the referendum only impacts the Park City sales tax rate, and our team of dedicated financial professionals will keep a close eye on the spending approved by voters. Our best practices approach has helped Park City earn high ratings from our auditors for accountability and transparency. The 2023 Park City Sales Tax Referendum, it's the result of city leaders honoring the valuable input from those we serve and turning your feedback into community-driven solutions for funding to maintain quality city services. Voters will have their chance to decide on the sales tax referendum on Tuesday, August 1st. Early voting is here at the Park City Administration Center on July 27th and 28th from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Saturday, July 29th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And again, on Monday, July 31st, at the Sedgwick County Elections Office. Park City staff and elected officials are committed to transparency. Should you have any questions or would like more information, please visit the Sales Tax Referendum website or call us at 316-744-2026. Please continue to provide us your input. Working together helps ensure we maintain the special community that we call Park City.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to consent agenda, unless anybody had any comments about that. Consent agenda, we are. Do I have a motion? Ben?
I'm listening. I present consent agenda as presented.
Tom?
I'll second it.
Sorry, I think that was actually George Glover. Tom? Okay, a motion by Ben, seconded by Tom. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. All right, we'll move to item seven, hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance of an ordinance levying special assessments for improvement in the Ironstone Village Edition, High Ridge Second Editions, and Prairie Hills Edition Phase Six. Larry?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is just a follow-up to what we did last month in preparation for a bond issue coming up in a couple months. We tallied up the cost of suit various street sewer and water improvements made for various residential areas, the Ironstone Village, High Ridge, and Prairie Hills. And before we issued those bonds, state law requires us to notify the homeowners, property owners, of the costs and proposed specials. That was done over the past few weeks, and the second part of that process is tonight where you have a hearing. So you can open the hearing, take any comments from the public, and then close it. And then after that, there's also a special assessment ordinance in your packet. You can adopt that, which will allow for these to be levied. Following that, we will notify the property owners one more time that, hey, this is the special assessment. They have until August 7th if they wish to prepay it. If they don't, which most don't, it will just go into the bond issue here in a couple months. So if you have any questions of me, let me know. Otherwise, I'll turn it over and you can open the hearing.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing at 7:15. Is there anybody present in the audience that would like to speak on this? I'll ask again, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Okay, see nobody. I'll close the hearing at 7:15 as well. Ben?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to approve ordinance 1169-2023, an ordinance levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, as previously authorized by Resolution Numbers 1053-2020, 1051-2020, 1052-2020, 1062-2021, and 1061-2021 of the city, and providing for the collection of such special assessments.
Thank you, Ben. Jim?
I'd second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben, seconded by Jim. This will be a roll call vote. Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Charlie Davidson. George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsada.
Aye.
Charles Schwenke. Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes six zero. Move on to item eight, discuss and consider approving a special permit for fireworks display at 81 Speedway on July 8th.
Yes, sir. 81 Speedway has made a request to have the fireworks displays as part of their scheduled event for July 8th. Section 7-207 in the municipal code allows for special permits for fireworks displays to be issued by the governing body. Tonight, we have Clint with us from the Speedway. If there are any questions from the council.
Ben?
I don't have any questions. I think this is pretty simple, easy to do here. Thank you guys for what you're doing in our community and continue to expand. I'd make a motion to approve a special permit for fireworks displays at 81 Speedway on July 8th, 2023.
Tom?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thanks for counting. Okay. Move on to item nine, discuss and consider adopting a resolution and/or letter of support for a historic horse racing facility. Sean?
Yes, sir. In May of 2023, council received presentations from the two applicants that submitted an application to the Kansas Racing and Gaming Commission, KRGC, for an organizational license to operate a historic horse racing facility in Sedgwick County, Kansas. Since then, staff has received a request from both of them to have council consider adopting a resolution endorsing their application. In addition, one applicant has requested council support in issuing a letter of support that can be provided to KRGC.
Thank you. Nancy Farber-Matola?
Hello, Mayor and Council. I in I am serve as Mulvane City Council's president currently, and at our council meetings, we're required to state our home address and some other details. Would you like those?
You don't need to do that.
Okay, wonderful. Well, I'm just here because it came to my attention that there had been some questions about the impact Boyd Gaming and their casino had on our community. Some I own a business as well as serving on council. I imagine some of you do as well. I own Luciano's. It's a restaurant in Mulvane, and we are lucky enough to have been there for 17 years. And I'm from Mulvane. My family's been there for several generations. So I just wanted to speak to that. I have comments if no one has questions, but generally, I don't like to waste people's time, especially when I'm the one in the hot seat. So if if there are any questions that you have, I wanted to answer them on behalf of my experience as a businessperson and as a council member. But if you don't have any comments, I'll tell you what was brought to my attention, and I'd be happy to speak on that. Okay? So what so my husband and I are lucky enough to do business with some of the people, some of the residents of Park City. And there were comments made that Boyd Gaming either had an issue with taxes or didn't pay their taxes or created problems with taxes. And I have to say, as a city council person, that is not the case. They actually paid their taxes in full every year, so it was never an issue of them not paying taxes. If you've heard stories about Mulvane, the city of Mulvane, and Boyd Gaming and tax issues, it has to do with Sumner County Assessment and not with Boyd Gaming. So I'd be happy to answer what I know about that, but they have always been good at paying their taxes. Also, I it was brought to my attention that there were some comments about security issues or policing. And I wanted to say again that, according to our police chief, a majority of, and I mean a major majority, of policing issues at the casino are really people who have voluntarily signed up to not enter the casino because of maybe gambling issues that they might have. And then unfortunately, they decide to enter the casino after they voluntarily excused themselves. And so they are arrested as they requested to be. So that is really honestly a majority of the arrests and police issues at the casino. As a local business owner, I have to say, I didn't know what to expect when the casino went in. We'd been there well before the casino was open. And in fact, we're we are seeing better numbers because they're there. Anytime the casino holds any sort of events or has a good turnout, that spills out into our community. So I get the impression, based on your looks, that you don't have any questions for me about it. I just wanted to close by saying that when the casinos presented proposals to the city of Mulvane, we actually provided letters for every project that qualified. We didn't just pick a winner. We picked we sent letters for everyone who qualified, and we let the Kansas Gaming Commission decide who they thought was best for our community. So if you have no questions of me, I think I'll leave it at that. Okay?
George?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions.
Sure.
How far are you from the casino?
Three miles.
Okay. And being that far apart, are you seeing any rise in maybe crime in that area because of the casino? What about caller complaints, people calling and using the 911, and maybe something going, you know, as far as violence in the parking lot? Are you seeing that around your facility?
No, and I I appreciate the question because it's a logical question to ask, but that is not what we're seeing. As a matter of fact, we have some technology that we use with our police force that we are able to patrol the casino parking lot. And we actually apprehend criminals just based on the license plates in the parking lot. And that's where you see most of the action in the in the parking lot. It really isn't violence or issues of violence in the parking lot or issues of violence in the surrounding neighborhood, because there is a neighborhood across the street, and it just isn't an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Okay, in closing, I would just like to say best of luck with that referendum. It made a big difference in our community. I hope it does the same for you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next, I have Jeff Longwell.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager, on behalf of the Wichita GC Chair, I mean, the GC Charities and the Golden Circle, we're excited to see 15 years of effort and millions of dollars of investment to reopen the former Greyhound Park in Park City, coming some so close to becoming a reality. And I want to state directly to all of you that we are excited to be in Park City. And as the chairman, the chairman of the charitable board, I can tell you that we will be making a huge commitment to our biggest partner, the city of Park City. A little disclaimer, I'm not paid to be here. I'm not an investor in this opportunity. Mr. Ruffin asked me to chair his charity board, and I was humbled and honored to say yes to that opportunity. So I'm here, obviously, as the chairperson of the charity board. Another person who believes in Park City and believes in the Ruffin opportunity is Bob Aldrich. Bob Aldrich, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for your commitment to Park City. I also want to introduce Chairman Pete Meitzner. Chairman Meitzner is not here on behalf of the county, but Chairman Meitzner does support this Ruffin plan. And Chairman Meitzner shared with me that he has had extensive analysis of both plans, and he believes the Ruffin plan is the best plan. So Chairman Meitzner, thank you for being here to support our team. Speaking of that commitment, I want to just hit some quick highlights. I'll be as brief as a former politician can be before the mayor kicks me to the curb. The HHR facility will be over 133,000 square feet of completely renovated Class A space utilizing all three floors. And we believe this will be one of the nicest properties in the region. This investment in the project will exceed $117 million on more than 70 acres. I don't know if Councilmember Bailey can calculate the property tax on that kind of investment in her head, but I can tell you it's going to be a big commitment. In addition to the 1,000 HHR machines, we're excited to open our world-class dining facilities, and that's plural. We will have state-of-the-art sports bars, simulcast horse racing venue. We believe the opportunity to wager on live simulcast horse racing will be a huge draw to Park City. But we will have truly world-class dining facilities in that renovated establishment. We're going to open a 7,000-square-foot gillies dance hall and saloon that will bring incredible live music right here to Park City. Another draw to the HHR venue will be a brand-new 110-room hotel. Not only will this benefit Park City through increased tax revenue collected, but it'll enhance Park City's ability to promote more convention business and capture additional sales revenue by keeping regional visitors right here in the city limits. And we are talking about a lot of jobs. There will be over 300 construction jobs, and there will be over 295 permanent jobs right here in Park City. The direct revenue that we calculate from that venue will be approximately $139 million annually. And that doesn't include all of the secondary revenue or the induced revenue from the associated activity. Because of that revenue brought in, and we won't know until we operate and open the facility, we think we could have as much as $2 million annually that the charitable board will be giving to local charities. And we are committed to giving that to local charities. I'll be happy to answer questions, but I want to summarize quickly that we're excited to get this project going and to partner with you, the city council, and the city of Park City as a whole. We're going to create something truly special and proud that we believe will benefit the community. And you will have our commitment and our unwavering support that this will be something that you can be proud of. I will finish with, like any good politician, we have to ask, your endorsement of this project will mean a lot. It will carry significant weight with the decision-makers on the Kansas Racing and Gaming Commission. Therefore, on behalf of Phil Ruffin, Wichita GC Charities, I humbly request your official endorsement of the Golden Circle proposal. I think that's about as brief as a politician can be, Mayor, and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
You had nine seconds left, so we'll cut you off there. Is there any questions of the council for Mr. Longwell?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks. Jason Watkins?
Mayor, I think I'll just let Mr. Longwell's comments stand.
Okay. Council? Sorry, George Capps?
Well, I thank the gentleman for his disclaimer upfront, and I and I apologize. I should have asked the young lady from Mulvane the same question. I should have asked her for if she represented anyone. I didn't. But I would like to say to her, I know she talked about their experience with Mulvane, but I would say to you, this is not our first rodeo. We had the Wichita Greyhound Park here for years, and we dealt with it. We're very familiar with how all that operates, but we do thank you for your input.
Tom?
I understand why both proposals are here talking tonight. I don't know when we switched gears, because I was under the impression we weren't going to make a recommendation, that we were going to let the let the two proposals play out in Topeka on their own. When did that change?
Tonight.
Okay.
That's why we're here right now, so the council can decide.
Okay, we can either do it or not do it, or pick one, or whatever. Okay, I just wanted to understand. Thank you.
Brandy?
So I have a few comments. So Nancy, is that is that your name? So I have a few comments. So Nancy, is that your name, Nancy? Sorry. I didn't write it written down, but Nancy. I know you brought up that the property tax in the city of Mulvane, but the property tax I was referring to more was the Sumner County taxes. And Yuri, the attorney for Boyd Gaming, has emailed me, showing me, you know, the status of the property taxes. And they've been under protest. And I guess for me, from my position I hold now, I have, I know that's your legal right to protest, but I have issues with that, being such a large entity in Sumner County. So, and you pay your taxes when you get the bill, but you're then protesting in them. And when you pay those taxes, the county has to hold on to that money for as long as that is under protest. So one of them, I think, was still under protest from 2014, 2015. So they're still several years back. And the county holds that money and doesn't distribute that money out to the entities that are relying on that money to help fund their budgets. So like your school districts, your water improvement districts, your cemetery districts. So to me, it's not only hurting, I feel like that hurts the community when the protests happen. Like I said, it's totally in your right to do it, and I get that. But it just, just from the position, like I said, I hold, to me, it just, it gives me a little heartburn, because it's hurting the communities. Second is the hotel. I think that's a big issue, and I think we've brought it up multiple times. We need hotels here in Park City, and I would like to see a hotel come here, be included in one of these proposals. I mean, we're having customers that are coming into our facility, coming to the conventions, or coming in just to gamble, whatever events are there. And they're consuming alcohol, a lot of them will be. And then we're allowing them to get out on the highway to drive home, or drive to whatever, you know, wherever they're coming from. And I think it's important, we have a hotel right there along with this project, when it's being up and going, so that way, we can have those people potentially stay in the hotel, just to help protect the public on the roads. Another issue I have is the economic development. So I think with the lawsuits, even though you're not a direct person in the lawsuit against the Yandot Nation, or not Yandot, my bad, Crosswinds, you're still part of it in a roundabout way, and that has hurt Park City right now with economic development, because it has prevented Crosswinds from expanding and doing things that they said that they were going to do, like put in a bigger convention space. So they've kind of halted all their growth because of this lawsuit. And so that, in return, has affected Park City right now. So those are just some of the things that I really have issues with. I mean, I think either plan would be, are good, and we'd be happy with whoever came here. But I think personally, my support would be for the Golden Circle Casino proposal, just because of the, I know property taxes have always been paid, they've on a vacant building that have never been opposed. The hotel is coming in with the building of the facility. And, I mean, those are just, those are big, and those are important to me. I want to look at this as doing something good for the community. And I think with the Golden Circle proposal, we heard Mr. Longwell tell us that the revenue, the charitable revenue, is going to come directly into Park City to help local here. And yes, you guys have a good charity involved with yours, the veterans, and I'm not discounting that by any means, but we want some to be here local, and we want it to benefit Park City. And so that, to me, is why I would support the Ruffin proposal.
Thank you, Brandy. Ben?
So this is my sixth year on city council. And in six years, we've had a lot of easy choices to make, like the one agenda item right before this. And we've had some that are more difficult. And I will say that this one, and one that we voted on a couple years ago, have probably been the two toughest decisions to go through and weigh through, because it's a huge impact to our community and to the lives of everybody here. And I've, this one here has caused me probably some of the most hardest nights of thinking and going through the process. And when it comes down to it, I think I need to go back to my basics, what I've always said I thought was important, and what the role of government should be. To that, honestly, I don't feel it's government's job to tell individuals what a building and what their property should look like, as a general rule, because that's the developer's job, to provide a quality proposal. That does that. Now, I think both of these proposals do that, but I think liking one above another, because I like the aesthetics of it, is kind of moot. And I don't think it should be based upon that. But then it comes back to what's best for the city, what's best for the community. And I think it was, Councilman Capps made a good point, that Mr. Ruffin has been in this community before, and has done many years of business with our, with our community. And when Councilman Capps served as police chief, he knows full well what has happened there, and the partner that has, the partnership that has gone on. I'm also a big fan of competition. I think competition breeds, should breed excellence and improvements. And to that effect, to that part there, I think anytime you open up competition, if you're going to have to, if government's going to be engaged on something, limiting or restricting or creating monopolies is not the best route to go, because that doesn't move itself in the right direction. I missed the first presentation. I was gone on a trip with the military and was not able to be here for the Boyd Gaming presentation. I appreciate them reaching out and following up with that. And I will say this, I think that Mr. Laham is a phenomenal developer, phenomenal developer. You look at the things there across our community, I think they're great projects. I would love to be able to sit there and say, Mr. Laham is developing in our town because of what our town's doing. That's how I feel. But I also feel that when it comes down to this issue here, to the basics of what I believe is right here, and this, again, has been over several nights of going through, I will concur with the two statements previous. And I do think that if I have to make a decision on it there, that I do think that the Ruffin plan is the best proposal that's been put forward for the reasons I've listed. But I think it's important that us as a community understand as well that we're going to have a dance partner in this. And while we will make a recommendation, or not make a recommendation, or wherever we might be at on this, the reality is, is that we want to be partners either way. And I think that we all agree with that. And I think that anybody that's proposing today would also agree with that, that they want to have a good partnership. But I've heard from citizens consistently, I've heard from several that are involved with the Yandot and the Crosswinds issue, and for the purposes of supporting our citizens who have had their daily lives affected, that's where I would, that's where I fall at at this point.
Thank you, Ben. George Capps?
Well, I got the mayor, what Brandy and Ben are saying. A lot of it's from experience. For years, Mr. Ruffin has been a businessman here. He ran a business for years here. We never had any problems. When he ran the Greyhound Park, we never had any problems. I know, when they started to build it, there was a lot of people complaining, oh, this is going to happen, that's going to happen. It never happened. They ran a good business, had no complaints that amounted to anything. So my support would certainly go to Mr. Ruffin.
Jim?
Thank you. Well, what a great situation we've grown our city to be in, where we have two great parties looking at moving over here and starting additional businesses. If I, I don't want to have to pick, just because I want you both to be here. There's economies of scale, and it would, it would make it an even greater stop if you were both here. That's not the recommendation we have the choice of making. So, you know, it's kind of looking at us to make a recommendation. George Laham's a great developer, you know? I love it that he bought real estate in our town, and I'm, I would be excited to see what he could do with it. His reputation precedes him, and, and he's got a lot of nice, a lot of nice projects around the country and Wichita. But that's, that also goes with the Ruffin group. They own a lot of real estate. They're, they're good people. They've surrounded themselves with good people. You know, there's really no wrong answer here, so I guess I have to look at what provides the greatest economic impact, and that's where my mind goes to make the decision. And I love the hotel that the Ruffin project has. I think that's something we need. I'd love to see the Greyhound Park brought back to life and, and turned into something positive. So just to let people know, that's where my mind is leaning.
Thank you, Jim. George Glover?
Yeah, I appreciate the fact you guys have came, and you've, you've offered what you're going to do and not do for the city. I appreciate that. You know, for me, it's about representing the families of Park City, the people of Park City. I had someone call me that has a gambling addiction, and their concern was, how would that affect the families of Park City? How would it affect Park City itself? And I know it's all, a lot of times it's about the money, it's about the jobs, but for me, it's not about that, guys. It's about representing the families. What is it going to do to the families? Are they going to lose their houses? Or are they going to lose, you know, their families because of gambling addiction? And for me, it only takes one, because that one can turn into 25. You have that available here. People know it's here. We already have one casino here. And I'm not going to vote for either one of you. I think it's, it's wrong. I think a gambling addiction is something that we need to address anyway, but we're not, so that's what I have to say.
Thank you, George. George, I just was told that you signed up, and I looked, and you were signed up in the attendance side instead of on the agenda item, but I would welcome you to come up if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, Sean, for, sorry. Thank you for allowing us to visit with you tonight, a little bit about the project, and to answer any questions that you may have. George Laham, President Laham Development, lifelong Wichita. Our company is based here. We've been involved in the development business in the area for 30 years. You may be familiar with some of our projects, whether it's Cabela's and Supertarget at 21st and Greenwich, or Chicken and Pickle. Maybe you've been out, played a little pickleball. River Vista, down on Douglas and McLean, on the Arcandis River, or Bradley Fair, which, that's Trader Joe's, Sephora. We just announced that we opened Nordstrom Rack. So we've worked hard over the years to bring a lot of great retailers, restaurants, entertainment concepts to Sedgwick County and to surrounding communities. So at the end of last year, we were approached by Boyd Gaming, who decided to apply for the license for the HHR permit. And when they decided to come to this community, they selected us to be their partner, and said, we, we understand that, you know, Sedgwick County, we want to find a site that we think is most suitable for this facility. They came to, they came to Sedgwick County, we worked with them, we did a site search, and it became very apparent. Park City has a zoning classification that allows for gaming. Park City has been progressive. What you have done in the last five years is just amazing. With Amazon and the other facilities that you have built here is really amazing. And so it was, it was a pretty easy decision for us to come to Park City, purchase ground. We didn't, we didn't option ground with the idea that if we are selected for the permit, for the, selected through the application process, that we'll buy the ground. That's not what we did. We came to Park City, we purchased ground just south of Hartman Arena. We applied for the zoning. Thank you for approving the zoning application. And we're here today because we're committed to Park City. And, you know, we've, we've talked a little bit about hotels over, over time. And one of the first things that happened when we made the announcement that we were coming to Park City is the Lang Group, who, as you all know, just recently purchased Hartman Arena. Jeff Lang called me up. Jeff and I have known of each other for a lot of, for a lot of years, but not real well. He and his group came to see us. They said, we want to further develop Hartman Arena. We want to keep it an arena. And so we, we've agreed to work together, to be neighborly, and figure out how we can do things together. One of the things that they want to do is open a hotel. They want to build a hotel there. And whether it's Hilton, or it's Marriott, whoever it's going to be, they're going to come to this community, they're going to evaluate, and they're going to make a decision on the viability of a hotel in this community. And probably one of the first stops they're going to make is to come over to see us and say, hey, tell us what you're going to do at Diamond Joe, because that is going to drive a tremendous amount of traffic to this community. So we're happy to be supportive of the Lang Company's efforts in building a hotel here. You know, we've, we've committed to spend $160 million on this facility in this community. You know, if you look around in Sedgwick County, there's very few projects of that caliber that have been built here. In fact, give me a little bit of room, but I'm guessing the last time we built something of that magnitude was probably Intrust Bank Arena in downtown Wichita, which I believe was $208 million. But a $160 million facility is, is going to be a significant impact on this community. When Boyd Gaming approached us, they came to us through a mutual friend. We're, we're involved in the gaming facility in Pittsburgh, Kansas. And we have a mutual friend that is also friends with Boyd Gaming. So they came with, they came with great credibility. And if you'd like a Boyd in the gaming industry, they are best in class. They have a wonderful reputation, not only in Las Vegas, but they're in 11 different states. They have 28 facilities, and they employ approximately 15,000 employees throughout their organization. The commitment to charitable organizations in greater Sedgwick County is about $1.8 million, including $75,000 to the tourism board here in Park City, $75,000 to the city of Park City, to be used at your discretion. I guess in closing, what I would say is that we appreciate everybody being, everybody in this council and city manager being so receptive of having this facility here. Greatly appreciated. And, you know, the message that we need to send to the Kansas Racing and Gaming Commission is that an HHR facility is welcome in Park City. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Have no lights. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You may.
Thank you very much. I will rest on what George stated, and my name is Yuri Clinton. I'm with Boyd Gaming. We're very happy to even be considered to make a substantial $160 million single-phase investment in Park City. The work you guys have done to prepare Park City for such an investment speaks for itself. I would like Councilwoman Bailey to address just two of the points. I think George has addressed the hotel point. We see ourselves as a driver of hotel nights, substantial investment, substantial outlets that have been identified with a real construction schedule. I think one thing that separates us from the other proposal is the single-phase investment and the economic impacts that you will get from the new construction. But I do want to address the litigation point, and I also want to address the tax point. The tax point, I think it needs to be said, and in the email that was sent out- The tax point, I think it needs to be said and I, in the email that was sent out identifies that we paid well over $3.5 million unprotest, right? So, not, not, not reserved, not under protest, but that base every year since we've been there has gone and we have protested the amount above that and the Board of Tax Appeal has agreed. I think we are, are all familiar with businesses and own homes and we all understand sometimes you get a tax assessment that you say, "Okay, I know I owe taxes, we're going to pay it." But this portion here seems to be out of bounds and the Board of Tax Appeal has agreed with us every time and we still have been open to working with Cedric County and we remain open to working with them. With regard to the litigation, you know, we understand the significant contribution that the tribe has made to Park City. We think they're going to continue to be successful and continue to make investment. The state of Kansas is the named entity on that litigation and that point needs to be said. It is not void. But, you know, we're in business and we're in business to make money and make investments and the economic impact that you will see from ours, if, you know, you guys all have a individual capacity, you love Park City, it is evident and your commercial was exceptionally well done. So, that shows the personal commitment that you have to Park City. And then I would speak to you as a council, as a governing body, where you have two significant landowners. We are in Park City, not conditioned upon passage of the HHR. We are in Park City. Laham Developments bar a significant parcel of land. There is a significant amount of money shovel-ready, ready to go. Park City benefits no matter which entity. And the decision, you know, we're, we're thankful that the decision for that will yet to be made on July 11th, 12th and 13th. And what we would ask formally and humbly is that you say, "Yeah, like, we know the owner of the Greyhound Park outstanding for many, many years and we want to be the type of city that attracts new investment, private capital, unsubsidized dollars from all over the world." And the way that you send that message is to say, "We simply support an HHR facility here in Park City." And there'll be opportunity for individual council members to speak at the public comment hearing, but as a collective body, we would ask that the joint resolution go, that Park City make it known that they're open to investment, open to economic interest competing, which is a great signal for the world, competing to be in Park City. And that we will make sure that whoever, whichever owner of land gets the Park City HHR license has an opportunity to work effectively with the city for some time to come. So, I appreciate your consideration and we would ask tonight for a resolution in support of HHR facility. And that individually, if you want to speak on behalf of one of the applications, that certainly is appropriate, but as a body, we think it sends a very powerful message to investors from across the world that Park City's open for business. Thank you so much for your opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
I think everybody has had an opportunity to speak except for me, so my, my comments probably don't matter, but I'm going to say them anyway. I've looked through both of these plans and have a, a copy of both of the brochures that they sent out. I think, you know, we're, we're in a good spot, as Jim said a little bit ago. We're in a great spot just because we, councils before us have worked very hard for things like this to happen. This, the Amazon facility before this, Pratt Industries, I mean, all these great things happening, Star Bonds, I mean, they're coming to us and I think that is a true testament to the progressiveness of our city and that we are open for business. And then I'll, I'll sit with, first of all, to the Boyd Gaming Group and George. Thank you guys for, for the proposal that you guys sent. I think Boyd to you guys, you couldn't have picked a better local flavor, a local partner. I mean, they're just phenomenal and you guys have been open with your emails and stuff, information for any of the council members and anybody to have any questions about the proposals and appreciate your answering of the questions about taxes and the things, the questions that we had. Is what really, I think, marks for me is, I feel like there isn't like a contingent plan. For instance, if, if the Lang Group decides they don't want to do a hotel later, I feel like the Ruffin Group has already submitted a proposal that has the 110-room facility. It's, it's very clear to me that the Ruffin Plan is a clear winner for Park City. And I feel like for us, our job is to make sure the lives of folks in Park City is, is the best it could possibly be. And I think the impact of the Ruffin Plan is far superior in a shorter amount of time, I hope. The other thing that I guess reaches out to me is the Ruffin campus there or the compound or whatever we want to call it has eight, nearly 80 acres. And to me, that's just a, a lot of opportunity for growth. I, I know we're talking about restaurants here and a club here and a hotel here, but 80 acres, you can do a lot of stuff. Most of us will be off this council and, and I see still room for continued growth as we're gone. I think that just really bodes well for that plan. I like the aspect of local charities, that they're really focused, laser-focused on Park City and what can make our city, our community better. With that said, my, my support is very, very strong for the Ruffin Plan. With that, I would entertain a motion to support the Ruffin Plan to present to the state.
George Capps.
I'll second that.
Do we have any further comments? Tom.
I understand why the motion was made. I understand the proposal was put together. I've also seen the other proposal. I don't think that I'm in the position to make a recommendation, so I'll be voting no. There's a lot of unknowns. I've seen pictures and we've been talked to, but I just don't think the city ought to take a position in who's going to get it, so I'll be voting no.
You mentioned unknowns. If you have, if there's unknowns for you, the, the, both applicants are here.
Well, I understand it, but that's been touched on. I mean, the hotel on one was touched on between Lang and Boyd. I mean, they've had discussions, so it's not like they're not thinking about it. But I don't know how that'll play out, so. And then the state's going to play into this too. And I understand the recommendation goes heavy with the state. I just would like for us to stay in a position where we're friends with both sides and I think we will be, but I'm just not prepared to vote for one tonight.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
If you'll raise your hand. All opposed. Motion passes for two with George Glover in opposition and Tom Jones in opposition. Okay, thank you. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, discuss and consider a draft Park City Master Site Plan.
Yes, sir. Long awaited. It's been more than a month though, or so ago, since PEC and Lang and Associates was here to talk about the overall conceptual site plan for the downtown park center. Tonight, there was some scheduling conflicts with PEC, but we do have an associate here from Lang. They're on hand to present the latest rendition of the site plan. At your particular station, you have a two-sided sheet. One of it is what's shown up here on the screen and that is basically a simplified land use plan. And then on the backside of that, I believe we have some second slide there. This is a little bit more in-depth and this is more conceptual of what could be. There is definitely, I mean, when you come up and approve a master site plan, it doesn't get down into this level of details, but just so that council is aware of the possibilities of what could occur, that's what the architect, in this particular case, it was an architect, not an engineer, that elected to do. So, Hunter, if you would like to come up and present and explain a little bit further and I do believe that we also have some 3D rendering slides here after he gets done with this.
Good evening, Council. And yeah, what you guys are seeing here has been, one, an exciting project for Park City that isn't a decision that has to get made, but a collective, exciting project for the downtown district here. You know, going back and forth of, you know, molding this into what I believe is collective feedback from you guys and the residents here and what would be an acceptable downtown project and it's exciting here to see. So, with PEC and our architects that we're working with, we feel like this project here is, is really made it into its final rendition. We're excited about this as we currently work with, you know, our stance from the beginning has been, let's create the housing density for other retail businesses to flourish. And in the retail and office market, we need rooftops and we need residents to, to live nearby and to be able to have that be accessible. So, that has been our emphasis here on this development is to creating rooftops and a number of different options to that, whether that's the senior living facility, the apartment project, the townhomes. You know, we, we just have a lot of possibilities here for every resident in Park City. And so, you know, after your guys' further comment, you know, I think this is just, I like where we've landed here, so.
Thank you.
And again, these are just four or five 3D renderings of what the possibility could be. Again, Nick with PEC is a landscape architect, so he likes to draw pretty pictures of, hey, this is what it could look like. Once we break it down into the individual site plans to where you get the, the larger buckets, so to speak, then we can further refine that going down later on as far as what would the retail spaces look like. I do know that, and Hunter can answer probably a little bit better on this. The reason why a lot of these things were put in there is because they already have agreements or letters of intent with individuals that have said, "Hey, we're interested in this particular, we're interested in this one." If you look at the, the picture right there, right in the center, there is an 89,000 square foot senior living facility. From my understanding, that is a facility that is all the way from, you know, active living lifestyle, all the way through a memory care unit, all the way until unfortunately nurse, full 100% nursing care. So, there's that facility and that's, that's a individual or a company that has already stressed interest to it. The yellow lots are patio homes. Those were put on the far eastern side of the property with an extension over to the next land because they would like this to be the only first phase of their patio homes and they'd like to extend that on to the, to the lot further to the east, which is currently part of Park City, but it's not zoned at this time period and not considered part of the. It does offer a variety of housing. You have patio homes, you have townhomes, you have the senior living, you have an apartment, more traditional apartments. There are some vacant commercial spaces in there on the far west side of the property backing up to those homes that are, address some concerns at Beaumont. So, those lots right now are currently not programmed in at all. And then the, the park center portion of it, the, the park actual, I think that is just over one, right around 1.9 acres of land. And again, there's, there's a lot of pretty pictures of what can go in there, but that's to be determined at a later date, so.
And on purpose, this is, these are renderings and so even the design of the senior living facility, that's not specifically what that will look like. I think that is, you know, Nick at PEC putting a, you know, a conceptual rendering to that. Now, there will be, we would like to include architectural controls within this development so that there are, you know, we want a high, how to put this, a, a great product for Park City to come in here. So, we would not let anybody just come in and build whatever. We, we want this to be a, a high priority and high-class development for Park City to, to be proud of for their development, so.
This has been back two or three different times to the drawing board. On your sheet, it shows a lot of purple walking trails and paths and everything that does connect all the way up to the northeast part of the property to where it can go right across the street to Grove Park, so.
Sean, Will, the part up on where you just said that connects to Grove Park, those one and a half acre, one, two and three.
Yes, sir.
Do we have or would it be included in this part of the special assessments or the bonds to do curb and gutter there on the frontage road for that or is that something we would do on our own?
All that can be.
We're not there yet.
We're, we're not there, sir.
Thank you.
Yes. Any, any improvements that council deems appropriate that they would want to do, yes, that's.
I, I just really see like a lot of additional cars making turns from both directions and we need a center turn lane from there to probably really to hydraulic.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I do know that, you know, this has been a, a learning process. Some of the things that I've seen over the last couple of years is everyone always talks about football fields and parking lots in front of the large big box stores and everything to where that, that is not what's programmed here. If you look at the, the three vacant lots that they have zoned for commercial use up along 61st Street, they want those businesses right close to 61st Street and the parking would more than likely be on the south side of those properties. Anyway, neat concept.
And we still have in this plan, maybe not seeing it, the senior center possibly?
Right adjacent to the existing library.
I see it.
And it's right now shown in this rendition as a separate standalone facility, but it could be also incorporated into the actual library itself for a combination if that was what the council and the city and the library deem most appropriate.
So, what action do you need from the council tonight?
I think an approval of a, a master plan or of a overall just programming piece of our current layout of where we are and the situation of those programming, whether that is, you know, the placement of multifamily and senior living and just the overall flow of the entire development. You know, that is what we've been ultimately working on for the past few months is the placement and specifics and number of units and those sorts of deals. So, while some of that could vary, the overall master plan of this.
And, and as far as that, we're, we're looking at very nice-looking pictures and everything like that. The plan to be approved would be the very simplified one, not one that shows all the other pictures and it's just a simple block diagram that says, "Hey, look, this is kind of where we suspect that there, what's on the screen right there. This is where we suspect that retail is best going to be served. This is where we expect apartment complexes, senior living, patio homes."
Okay.
The, the master plan will probably go through three or four different renditions over the years.
Thank you.
You're going to have another come in and want something different, so, yes.
Thank you. Ben?
So, on the 61st Street side there, that one, two and three, that's obviously not part of the legend and I apologize if I missed that. That one, two and three, that orange squares by the senior center. That, that's not part of the legend, is that right? That's on the bottom here where retail, commercial, public, parking, parking for farmer's market.
I believe that would be under the commercial land section there.
Okay. So, and those are your thoughts?
PA 9, that's PA 9 under the commercial pads for 7.1 acres. Is that what you're asking, sir? Those three up at the top.
Okay, there's a backside. Let me flip over my sheet of paper real quick. I apologize if I missed that there.
Okay.
On the backside, I see it. It makes perfect sense there. Okay. I didn't realize it was two-sided. Simple Minds. What are the, I mean, you're thinking more big box type?
No, sir.
Okay.
Nope, that, that is, that is not the, the thought here. The thought is, you know, your, your local, or a deli or a lunch place or a coffee shop, more of your retailers, your local retailers of a boutique or, you know, maybe even some office space for employees within Park City that would like to call this their home. So, that.
Okay.
That is the plan for this. Maybe, you know, there's other medical uses for doctors to come and locate on a pad site out here that wanted to build their own standalone building and that's the intentions of, of this development.
Okay. I mean, I like, I like, I think at the end, there's a little bit more blacktop than green that, but I understand that again, this is all about, you have to have the, you have to have the economic drivers to support the other side of it. So, while it's maybe not the, the greenest that we were, we were hoping for, I think it does suit though and fit a lot of those checkmarks in that it has the green space, it has the farmer's market, it has, you know, an option for a splash pad and still continuation elsewhere. So, I like, I like it and I would go ahead and make a motion then that we approve this draft of the master plan moving forward and also. draft of the master plan moving forward and also congratulations on your commercial sales agent side.
Thank you, thank you.
George Glover.
Yeah, I have, I'll, I'll prove it with, with discussion.
Will you second it?
I'll second with discussion. The splash pad is, is a gimme, right? That's going to happen? That's on here?
I think that is part of our land use summary and our ideas.
One of the things we talked about when you guys initially came is a swimming pool. One of the things in Park City that we're, we're looking at that we, the residents really want is, is based on the surveys we've done is a swimming pool. Now, I know you've said before that you, they possibly have access, maybe one of the apartments is going to have a pool?
So the plan as of right now on certain number of units with our apartment partner would to have, would, would be to have a pool as an amenity for them.
For the residents or for the people that live there?
I don't know if I have that answer at the moment.
Okay, that's just, you know, when you initially came, that was, that was a question because we, one of the things is was the pool aspect and the...
And so there is an aspect right now to the, the green space in the middle, the true kind of park center aspect of this. That could be more of your kind of splash pad type of use. I don't know, right now in the middle, there's a, there's a programmed swimming pool, but more of a community gathering place there for kids and families to, to meet.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess I just want to, want to pipe into that because we do have a lot of momentum and a lot of energy with our sales tax stuff that's pending right now, but also we obviously have gotten a lot of feedback about swimming pool stuff, but I just want to bring this point up to the entire council. I know not everybody's here, but this downtown center is, is something that gets marketed and the, the success of it depends on the success of it, if that makes sense. They've got to sell lots, they've got to develop it and it's got to, it's got to be profitable, let's just say. Now, just remember what swimming pools, they're not, it's not a profitable item. So, though I do agree that the more, huh, it's an amenity, you're absolutely right. And that's why I think we need to make sure that we put the pool in the right place, I guess is what I'm saying. And this is probably prime ground for development like this and we do want to do a pool, but I'm not sure that this is the right place to actually do a pool.
Well, I disagree, but anyway, thanks for commenting on that. That's, that's, you know, like I said, the, the pool issue has been around, it's not going away. We can kick it on down the road as much as we want, we have to address it and the city council here knows that, so I'm addressing it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. Brandy.
I guess, George, just to comment, the, the pool, I, I think that's part of our sales tax referendum to put the pool somewhere. So I think that is coming, I don't think we're kicking it down the road, but I just want to make that comment. But with this, I, I appreciate you bringing it back to us. I feel like each time we get closer and closer to, and so this is exciting. I do appreciate you, those three pad sites that are right behind Beaumont Street, adjusting those for, to recognize those, those citizens inquiries that we had about that area. So, thank you and I'm supportive of this. Like I said, it's, it's closer and closer, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Jim.
No, I like it, just to be honest, I think it looks great. It's come a long ways since we started talking about it and it seems to encompass everything we've been talking about. I'll be interested to hear the swimming pool thing developed too. Really, the only question I have studying it here is the farmer's market. I'm trying to think through parking. Have we given a lot of thought to parking? Do we have enough parking for if we have a lot of people come in on a Saturday? And I'm picking on the farmer's market, it could be a dozen different things, but...
Yep, that's, that's a great question. Parking has been a big question regarding the master plan. I think it's a big question regarding any true downtown development, you know, that's in any municipality. At the moment, I think we have ample parking that would be around our retailing sector there, which is shown right now as the pink in the land summary. So we have, I will say, ran certain market studies on that farmer's market with local groups here that run very successful farmer's markets throughout Sedgwick County. And that's both in Derby and Wichita on the west side and downtown. And have talked about the initial draw that we would probably get at a farmer's market early on within Park Center and then planned growth throughout that. And, and they have not shown any major concerns with current traffic, not traffic, but parking spots that we've, we've shown here and, you know, that's ultimately, I think, the goal is to, to make it, to have the perception of everything is busy. This downtown is, is, it's full. It is, our shops are leased and businesses are thriving in here and I hope that is a, almost, I know that sounds bad, I almost hope that is an issue, that there's, we can't find any parking spot in Park Center because it is that busy and we have got that much activity going along here. But from the studies that we've ran on the farmer's market, that hasn't been addressed and we feel like it's ample to where it's at and why we like the sectioning out of it right now within the senior living and the multifamily and then the retail, we will, all those buildings are met for code on the certain parking spots that we would need, so.
Okay, good, I really appreciate that, yeah. That would be my comment too, that the best problem we could have is 10 years from now trying to figure out how to build a multi-story parking garage because we don't have room for all the cars, so, thank you.
Ben.
Yeah, I just, I do want to reiterate too because I had somebody even comment online during this, here is the issue of the pool and I agree that this is, is, the pool is an important priority that I think we got to address and we need to address it sooner than later, which I think that's our goal, all of our goal, but the town center is, is definitely not the best place used for it because of traffic that's going to be engaged there, whether it's living and putting a pool in the middle of neighborhoods is generally not the best route to go. So, yeah, well, I think we got to address it. I don't think it's part of the town center part, I think it should be part of our parks plan that we're still working through and like I said, I think everyone's in agreement that that's what needs to happen, so.
And my point is, and I, George, I, I can't agree with you more and that's why, if you remember, we've talked pool, pool, pool for so many years and, and we've just talked. And that's why, if you remember in January in our special workshop meeting, actually we were talking about this, I threw the idea of the 1% sales tax because let's stop talking about it and let's get it done. And here's what we're doing, we're not kicking the can, we're giving to the voters to say, do you want it or not?
I think the voters do want it.
We're going to find out.
And they have for some time.
We're going to find out.
Well, I think we already have found out, just from the comments and the people that have called me saying, what, what happened to this pool we were talking about? Where's it at? And see, that's the thing, like Ben said, let's, let's do action, let's...
But, but George, the thing is, this is prime real estate. We want this to be absolutely prime, high dollar real estate. To put a pool in it just doesn't make sense and we do need a pool in the ground somewhere, but this is not the place to do it. And here's the thing, the, the voters have said for years that they want a pool, yeah, we know that, but until we send it to them and say, do you want thi, do you want this, you have to vote on it so it's funded. If it's funded, what's the excuse? People want it, we got the money.
Hopefully the ones that sales tax, they won't want it and they will fund it. And then the problem's going to be now...
We agree.
Is where do we put it?
That's a great problem to have.
That's a great problem. We can't, we're not, we can't put it here, so what park do we use? And that's the problem. What park do we use?
We've got plenty of parks.
I know it.
Yeah, let's make it happen.
Sure, if I may. I, I think in about a month, you're going to have a recommendation from the parks master plan that tells you exactly where to put a pool and a splash pad, both.
Great, I, I think George has a great point and I think we have our priorities down. I just want to address that, so, anyway, Tom.
I was going to say, I, the pool is the wrong place, the downtown's the wrong place for it. There's several other places in town that would be better suited, more centrally located. We want, so people can walk there and you don't want them going across busy streets and everything else to get there, so.
All right, we have a motion by Ben, seconded by George Glover. I'm seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. All right, six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 11, discuss and consider approval of bid from Andale Construction for water and paving improvements for Air Capital Industrial Park 5th Edition.
Yes, sir. Air Capital Industrial Park 5th Edition is located on the south side of 61st Street, west of Prospect Road, right at the city limits on the west side. In May, petitions for water, stormwater, drainage, and paving improvements were submitted and approved by the council. A bid opening was conducted on June 21st and just one company submitted a bid. Andale Construction's combined bid of $561,942.56 was below the engineer's estimate of $590,620 and I have broken out to each individual. Attached is a copy of the bid tabulation as well as the contract. It is budgeted and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Sean. Ben.
I'd make a motion to approve the bid tabulation, authorize the mayor to finalize and execute a contract with Andale Construction in amount not to exceed $561,942.52 to be paid out of the capital projects fund.
George Glover.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second for item 10, motion by Ben, seconded by George Glover, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes six zero. Item 12, discuss and consider a resolution determining the advisability of paving improvements for I-135 Arena Edition.
This is known as Hartman Arena Drive. Both item agenda, agenda item number 12 and 13 are related to each other. The attached petition was filed with the city clerk proposing pavement improvements to 135 Arena Edition. The petition was signed by the owners of record of more than one-half of the area liable for the assessment for the proposed improvements and therefore the petitioners are requesting that such improvements be made without notice or hearing as required by KSA 12-6A01. The improvements include extension connecting of Hartman Arena Drive with drainage to be installed where necessary to serve the area described as the improvement district, all in accordance with the city standards, plans, and specifications prepared and approved by the city engineer. The estimated or probable cost of the proposed improvements is $1,086,397 with said estimate cost being increased at a prorata rate of 1% per month from and after the date of the adoption of this resolution authorizing the improvements. The improvements district to be assessed for the cost of the improvements are lots 13 through 15, Block 1, Lot 4, Block 3, and Lot 1, Block 4. And the method of assessment is on a square footage basis with Lot 1, Block 4 paying 15 40ths of the total assessment, Lot 4, Block 3 paying 12 40ths of the assessment, Lot 13, Block 1 paying 3 40ths of the assessment, and then finally Lot 14, Block 1 paying 3 40ths of the total assessment. Oh, I'm sorry, and Block, Lot 15, Block 1 shall pay 7 40ths of the total assessment. The apportionment of the cost of the improvements between the improvement districts in the city is 100% for the assessed against the district and zero to be paid by the city. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Ben.
Yeah, I have a real quick question actually for Doug or Chief, whoever he is today on that one there. This is a silly, a simple one.
Your name tag.
Is there... Is, is there some, something in our rules that would prohibit us or change that? When we have things like this, because item 12 and 13 are the same, I know we have sometimes where it's 12, 13, or all of these are the same, but except for maybe ones for water, ones for paving, one for... Is there anything that would allow us to move these to a consent type thing?
You're saying combine them, is that the question?
Yeah.
Combine them and put them under consent.
Not for resolutions.
Okay.
We, I think we started doing that on bids and we, we can certainly do that, but these are separate resolutions to authorize the project, they need to be separated. Yeah, sorry.
No, that's okay, I just, I don't mind, I just thought I might save a second and I just wasted that second we saved. So I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 1158-2023, resolution determining the advisability of making of certain internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect to and authorizing and providing for the making of improvements in accordance with such findings for paving improvements on I-135 Arena Edition.
Thank you, Ben.
Councilman, I, I do have a suggestion though, I see now what your point is. You have a long history since I've been here and I've never interrupted the past council members making, reading the entirety of the, of the header there. That's not necessary. You could certainly make a motion to adopt Resolution 1158-2023. It's in existence, it's in your package, it's out there for everybody to see, it's already got a number on it and that's sufficient.
Bless you.
Second for Resolution Number 1158-2023.
Jim.
I was buzzed in, but my thing started flashing. I would second it, but for discussion, just because I want to know, there wasn't a map, so what specifically, what, what street are we specifically talking about?
This is Hartman Arena Drive, connecting it from in front of Hartman Arena Drive up to Harper Camperland.
It's that stretch to connect that, finally.
So the same way that Air Cap Drive is being connected between 53rd and 61st, now we finally are going to have Hartman Arena Drive connected all the way between 77th and, and 85th.
That is wonderful, so I definitely second that.
I just wondered this, when we mentioned Hartman Arena Drive, obviously Hartman Arena's going to change the name soon. This may be a time for another day, we'll talk about it later.
Well, no, sir, I mean, well, you can't talk about...
I'm just wondering, from, from the, the road in front, right there at Hartman where the intersection is and the one road goes out to Broadway from there north, are we, do we want to discuss at some point that name of that road? Obviously, it's Hartman Arena Drive now.
I think there will be a conversation that we'll need to have in the future about Air Cap Drive as well as Hartman Arena Drive. And it may be simple just to change it up to Arena Drive, but that's later on, sir.
Thank you, that was my suggestion. So we have a motion by Ben, seconded by Jim for our Resolution Number 1158-2023, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes six zero. Item 13, discuss and consider resolution determining the advisability of water distribution system improvements for I-135 Arena Edition. Ben.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to approve Resolution 1159-2023.
Thank you, George Glover.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
That's a huge milestone to get those all approved and we're going to have that road pushed through as well as aircraft, Air Cap Drive is in the works.
I did.
Okay, item 14, discuss and consider a resolution authorizing the 53rd and Interstate 135 traffic signalization. Sean.
Ben. No, joking.
Charter ordinance C-39-2019 provides the city may file with the governing body a multi-year capital improvement program developed by the city, including public improvements, acquisition necessary land, acquisition of equipment, vehicles, or other personal property to be used. In May 21, council approved such a resolution, 106921, authorizing and providing for payments of costs for certain improvements within the CIP. Upon approval of the CIP, the city is authorized to issue GO bonds in the amount sufficient to carry such, out such plans and associated costs. And by resolution, shall specify the amount and the purpose of temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds to be issued. This resolution in front of you tonight will serve as the initial authorization for the 53rd and Interstate 135 traffic signalization with an estimated cost of $356,660. I do want to mention that one of the council members called earlier today and said, well, a little bit confusing because of the fact these are temporary traffic signals at 135 and 53rd Street. This is just authorizing it, so it isn't concluded in our CIP and if council elects that they want to put this under a general obligation bond, then council has that authority to do. But if council wants to determine later on that we don't want to spend money on a temporary type deal with general obligation bonds, council's free to choose a couple other different areas of how they would like to finance. So this is more just for that procedure.
Thank you. I have a motion. Brandy.
I move to approve Resolution 1160-2023.
I'll second that.
Oh, I guess I have to read the rest of this, I'm sorry.
No.
No, there's...
No.
It's talking about submitting Resolution Number 116, or 1069? Do I have to read all that? No, okay, never mind.
Include the other resolution.
Okay.
Chief Moser said you're good.
Okay.
Now, motion by Brandy, seconded by Tom, I have no further discussion pending, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Motion passed six zero. Item 15, discuss and consider a resolution determining the advisability of making certain internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, being paving improvements in Prairie Hills 4th Edition. Sean.
Yes, sir. In April, council approved Resolution 115123, a paving petition for Prairie Hills 4th Edition. The attached petition amends the list of improvements to include the construction of a sidewalk along hydraulic in addition to the construction of the streets. The estimated probable cost of the proposed improvements is $600,000 and that's up from the last one, which was $590,000 or $595,000. Simply put, this is a new addition that is just south of Beaumont that we have like 35 homes that are getting ready to go in there and if we're going to get serious about ready to go in there. And if we're gonna get serious about doing the connectivity plan and sidewalks and everything, we put it on the petition to go ahead and install that sidewalk for the developer to do that as part of the assessment. So that's the major change. I will sit there and say, as far as the suggested motion, it talks about in repealing Resolution 1150, or 11512023, that is not correct. Council just needs to approve Resolution 1161. We're not repealing the first one.
Thank you. Ben?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 1161-2023 with the exemption mentioned.
Tom?
I'm gonna second it.
Great news. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six-zero. All right. Last, we have item 16. Discuss and consider board appoint for Chisen Creek Utility Authority. I've had some schedules, conflicts pop up with CCUA, and I just want to make sure that we're, always have an alternate that's available to attend the CCUA meetings. So in doing that, there's no limit on how many alternates we can have with the CCUA. So I'm asking to appoint Ben. He's made it known that he has an interest in participating in that whenever needed. So I'm asking to appoint Ben Sauceda to the CCUA as an alternate. Tom?
Pardon?
That was the last one, sorry.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve Ben to be an alternate to CCUA.
Thank you, Tom. Jim?
I'd second that.
And while we're on the topic of the CCUA stuff, just to let everybody know, the mayor of Bel Air asked, sent me an email tonight asking to have another one of the
Unbonk.
Unbonk meetings between the two councils to discuss negotiations of the water allocation. I just want to let you guys know that. I'm not asking for any action or any discussion about it. I just want you to know. So, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Okay, item 17. Accept infrastructure. Sean, go ahead.
Yes, sir. This is the turning lane for Prater Edition, and authorize the payment of the, to the developer for the services rendered. As council is well aware, the petitions for the construction of the turning lane were filed with the city clerk and approved back in November of '22. It was updated in February of '23. The developer elected to forego the city bid process and contracted directly with the contractor to make said improvements. The construction inspection was provided by an engineering, independent engineering firm, and ultimately, the improvements were inspected and accepted by our Public Works Department as well as our city engineer. This action is to authorize the payment of the invoice related to said improvements in an amount not to exceed the petition amount identified in Resolution 1145. Payment can, to the developer, is subsequent to the developer providing the required letters of credit, an IRS Form W-9, and lien releases for each one of the subcontractors, which we have already received. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Sean. Brandy?
What, can you remind me what the, those costs were not to exceed amount was? Do you have that?
Uh, $69,000, where is that? 69, I don't have the exact amount here. Right at $69,700, some odd.
Okay, I was just curious what we were.
The petition was 50 cents more than the actual bill came in.
Okay.
It's within the amount.
Okay, that's fine. I'll move to accept the infrastructure improvement of the turning lane on 77th Street for Prater Edition, and authorize payment to the developer for services rendered in an amount not to exceed Resolution 1145-2023.
Thank you, Brandy. Jim?
I'd second that.
Any further discussion on that? All right. I have a motion by Brandy, seconded by Jim Schroder. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Okay, we are completed with our agenda. Do governing body comments? Jim? Have any comments tonight? Brandy?
I just want to say the HHR item, I did really hope it doesn't discourage Mr. Laham to potentially want to do business in Park City or build in this area. I mean, he does a great job. I just, I, I just stick with, you know, my gut, and it tells me that this call Mr. Cool is, is the best option. So, like I said, I just, I just want to put that out there, that I just, I really do appreciate Mr. Laham and all he does, and I really hope he would still consider coming to Park City if they do not get this HHR facility. Second, CCUA is having a special meeting on Thursday at 4:30 here at Park City, City Hall. It's to discuss the letter that needs to be sent to the state in response to KDHE, and it's due by June 30th. So we're meeting on the 29th to determine what we're gonna say to KDHE. So if you want to hear, welcome to attend.
Thank you. George?
Well, you know, some things you don't need to put off. You know, I didn't, I didn't file for reelection. But there's something I'd like to say. You know, city council can be adversarial at times. We get crossways with each other. But I, I want all of you to know that I don't take that personal. It's not personal on me. It's just part of it. It's, it's adversarial. I've got, I've got adversarial with the city attorney, with the city administrator, and assistant administrator from time to time. And maybe some of you guys. But I want you to know that, that none of it was personal, and I want to say that now. You know, I'm not gonna put it off till tomorrow. So I, I just want you to know, you know, I got very fond thoughts of everyone here. I, I, there's only, there's only one person that I ever really took personal, but I made peace with that, and they're not here anyway. So outside of that, that's, I, I've just enjoyed all the time I've spent here and getting to know everyone. And I just thank everyone with their patience with me. Thank you.
Took us a while to get you trained up.
It took a while.
Turned out to be pretty good, though.
Tom?
I was gonna say the vote tonight on the potential casino. I personally felt like we ought to have a dog in that fight, oughtn't to not have a dog in that fight, that the city ought to make that decision. Both of them are here. Couple good proposals. One is a little bit better than the other. I just couldn't vote for it. So, that's all I got.
Thank you. Ben?
Yeah, George, I do want to say thank you for your time on council and your, your time serving our city. And I've enjoyed getting to learn from you and just get a lot of wisdom from you over the years, and I appreciate you. And I enjoy the opportunity to serve alongside you in the same ward and represent there. So I just want to say thank you for that. And I look forward to the next few months that we have serving together as well, because I know that with all of us, it's the same. I think we always do what we feel is best for the community. And we might get, we might take different roads of getting there at times, but I know that's the direction that we all want to head. So thank you, George, for your.
It's, it's been a very, it's been a very humbling experience to serve city all these years. It has. It's, it's been humbling.
And again, I think to the, to the vote, I, tonight, there, this is, again, I mentioned it, this is one of the tougher, tougher meetings you have when you have to take votes that, you know, you got great, great people, great plans on both sides. And ultimately, it comes down to what is best for the citizens that you represent, because that's ultimately who you, you answer to. And as I was thinking about it, I mean, it was one of those that, that, that kind of hits you in the gut when you're trying to toss through and really make a decision. There's some that are simple. And then there's ones like this where it's, it's a lot tougher. And these are the ones you don't sleep as well. You don't function sometimes as well. Just thinking through that, and I was thinking, well, here in a few minutes now that we've made it through, I get to go home and play with an adorable little guy and enjoy life. And that's what makes it worth it. So the tough votes happen, and yeah, we gotta stick with them. And yeah, we gotta hold on to them. And those, we're gonna be responsible for those votes, but there's a lot more important things in life as well. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to that here in a couple seconds.
Thank you, Ben. George?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody that came out to our 14th Annual Park City Fish and Derby. I thought we had a great time. It looked like we were gonna be rained out early, but the sun lifted from, the sun came out to the west, so we appreciate that. I want to thank Sean and his crew in getting the moss off the pond. It took you guys, what, a day and a half? Yeah, Gina, appreciate that. All the efforts that you had with your team showed a lot of good teamwork efforts on your team. I really appreciate that. We had a beautiful morning. 202 in attendance. Thanks, Brandy, for counting those. Longest fish, 18 and 1/4-inch catfish, shortest fish, 2-inch bluegill. The guy that won it on the 2-inch bluegill has won it four years in a row for the shortest fish, just for, you wanna put that in the yearbook or whatever, book of records. But also, the Parks Master Plan, if you haven't taken that survey, please do that, so we can assess the areas that we're looking at now in the parks. Also, I wanted to wish everybody a happy 4th of July. Thank you.
And George, just correct on that. The mask, the Parks Plan, they just shut that survey off, so.
Oh, did they? My bad.
It's all right. No worries. I just didn't want someone to go clicking on it, and it wasn't available, emailing. So I actually posted it today. That's the only reason I didn't do it. I posted today and had somebody comment on it.
Okay.
So parade, 4th of July parade, coming up Tuesday, 8:00 a.m., is when they start lining up for the parades. Parade starts at 9:00, followed by a car show up at McLean Park. And then there's park, free park activities, food, games, inflatables, dunk tank, ice cream, and there's gonna be a pickleball and cornhole tournament. There's a few spots left in the pickleball tournament. And then there'll also be a pet show at 11:00 a.m. there. So all this stuff is listed online on Park City's Facebook page. So, looking forward to getting that, another one of those out of the way. We've had a great time at the past events, so with that, I would entertain a non-debatable motion to adjourn. Ben?
Yeah, in doing so, I just want to, if you're watching, pay attention to the weather tonight. Looks like it could get pretty bad here pretty soon. So, but that, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Ben, seconded by George Glover. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six-zero. We are adjourned.